Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting of February 2nd, 2023. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral and seated territory of the Chumash Tongva, Fernandino, and Totavium, and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and We will begin also with the pledge of allegiance and for the pledge of allegiance, I want to invite up Ms. Diana Abasta, President of the Burbank Teachers Association.
Place your hand over your heart, please. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the nation, that is small with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Abasta. Mrs. Quiterio, if you could please take the roll call at this time.
Member Tabit?
Present.
Member Pontra Kamkar?
Present.
Clerk Aga Konian?
Present.
Vice President Weisberg?
Present.
President Ferguson?
Present. All five members are present, so we do have a quorum and are able to proceed with business for tonight's meeting. Moving on to item number five, reporting on closed session, items 3A through 3E were for discussion only. No action was taken. We will move then to item six, adjustments to the agenda. Are there any requests for adjustments to the meeting agenda? I will ask based off of the cards that we have received that we consolidate the two periods of public comment into one period at this time. Without objection, we'll move forward with that. Any others? Seeing none, item seven, we'll move to items for future agendas. Any agenda item requests from my colleagues? Ms. Tabit?
Yes, and this is a...
Microphone, yeah.
This is a difficult topic, but we need to bring up our... we need to reevaluate our drug policy, especially as it relates to marijuana. And so it has to be done before 2024, but I'd like to start the conversation sooner. Right now, we have a drug-free, drug-free policy. So in relationship to hiring and the movement of employees to other positions, they have to go through a drug test. So what's our policy on that, knowing that... are we going to change it? Are we going to keep it the same, knowing that things have changed since the last time we created it? And it has to be a conversation, and then it could be agendized, I guess, for a vote or we could however, but it needs to be discussed.
Understood, received, and we'll get that on an agenda without any objection. Ms. Tabit and I had... any others from my colleagues? Ms. Tabit and I had the privilege... I joined Ms. Tabit, that's the way I'm going to say it, at the Five Star Coalition, at which point Senator Portantino introduced a number of bills that could potentially help us financially. And so I've asked his staff to provide background and information sheets on the legislation for us to potentially agendize resolutions of support for those bills for consideration to the board. So I'm formally asking that that be agendized so that we can move forward on that front. And then if we could do additional outreach to Assemblymember Friedman and Senator Menjivar on their legislative introductions to potentially see if they are items of education or potential interest to the school district, so we could pursue the very same, that would be great. Great, that's consensus, so thank you for that, and we'll bring back that item. Thank you, Ms. Tabit. Moving on to item number eight, presentations and recognitions, we have none. We'll move to reports from the board, student representatives, we have none. We weren't cool enough, folks, we just weren't cool enough.
It's a big night of rivalry between Burrows and Burbank High, various events tonight, soccer, basketball.
This is why we weren't cool enough. So, you know, good luck to all of our teams, and yeah, we're wishing everybody safe and healthy games with demonstrated good sportsmanship. Moving on to item number 10A, which is public communications on agenda items. So to members of the audience, we see you. Hi, welcome to the board. It's been a long day, so we're going to try and get everybody through as quickly as possible. One of the things that could help us out, if you are intending on speaking, is getting your card in as soon as possible, just so I can keep this moving. I could appreciate your help. With that, we will move forward with public comment. I'll continue accepting cards so the last speaker has concluded their comments. The first card comes from Mr. Swasman.
I'd like to reserve the opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting as well, that's on the agenda, to the person who returned my hat. Thank you, you know who you are. What happened to Ed 101, we used to recognize people for participating in that program? Number eight on your agenda, recognizing folks. For years, I've been asking you to recognize gain credit union for the program of the financial program they have for our high schools. I don't know why I have to ask you over and over. I've also asked you to recognize employers in the fax program who are hiring our special needs kids. Don't make me ask you year after year. I'll pay for it. If it's a money issue, no problem. 12C, why? You're going to spend $523,000 for special services with Perkins Eastman? Don't you know what's wrong with your own schools? We need the money here for our kids. It doesn't seem right. Over at the city council, they're issuing $120 million worth of bonds for upgrades, whole story there, but the bottom line is, your utilities are going to go up 50% just for that bond. And when you factor in the time of cost of living and new equipment, it's really 100%. So how's that going to affect our district with these crazy utilities that are going up? Mr. President, you've talked about going green and spending money on solar. I am absolutely against it. The cost benefit, it does not pay. We need the money for other things. Let's not waste our money or even talk about that kind of silliness. There are certain things you can do, certainly, you know, but the idea of installing solar, and they talked about over at the city side, they talked about a bond for this type of thing, and no more bonds. Our economy is in bad shape right now. I received an email from the superintendent talking about five jackasses who beat a guy to death, and he's offering counseling. And my question is, how did we get here? How did we get here with these employees who should know better? And I think it's a failure largely on school boards across America. Our standards aren't high enough. And when you waive the testing college requirement, standard college, forget about college, let's just talk about high school diplomas. You guys advance kids who are not worthy of advancing. You promote kids that are illiterate. You hand out diplomas like you're handing out a piece of candy. Demand more from him. His stated goal is to, in the fraction of improvements, and when I ask him about why our kids can't pass state standard testing, he says it doesn't count, he makes excuses. It's not good enough for me. Now, you throw in affirmative action, you throw in quotas, advancing and promoting kids who are illiterate, and that's our job pool. We advance kids who are ignorant, and we give them guns. And these things happen, and they're going to continue to happen, but let the change start with you. It's not a question of money. Don't say you don't have enough money. At Miss Weinberg School, it costs $45,000 for the first year to attend that school, and you could get a teacher who won't even stand for the flag salute. That's what we're teaching our kids. So don't tell me it's money. Why don't you tell people what it really is? Parental involvement?
Yes.
And teaching your kids to read if you want your kid to turn out? Please give some thought to what I'm saying, and don't summarily dismiss it. I want some change. Was it Gandhi who said, "If you want change, let it start with you"? Let it start with us. I had high hopes for the superintendent, he's a young man, going to be here a while, and he could have made some changes that would have, you know, started in kindergarten and went through high school, and I've been disappointed. That's what you get when you hire a guy who's not an educator, his focus is in other places. It's time for a change. I mean, I'm asking you, please.
Our next speaker is Mark Norberg, followed by Diana Abasta, and that's the last card I have at this time, before we go to virtual public comment. Go ahead.
Hello, Burbank Board of Ed. I'm Mark Norberg. I teach eighth grade English at John Muir Middle School, an awesome place to work. I first want to say that I really, really appreciate everyone here and on the board. I think it's really important that we acknowledge the service that you do. It takes a lot. We can't function as a society if we don't have people like yourself stepping forward and putting your hat in the ring and leading and taking all the slings and arrows and road bumps and whatever that goes with it. So just know you're appreciated. There's three things that I would really like you to consider as you move forward with negotiations with the union. The first thing is, I think it's really important that we acknowledge, we all want the same thing, which I believe is what's best for our students, right? And I think what that means is, we ultimately want a world-class education system here in Burbank. We may not get there, but that's what we should be heading towards and aiming for, is world-class education. And if that's true, you can tell me if you agree or disagree, well, then we should ask ourselves, what goes into a world-class education? What is it? And if you're data-driven like I am, well, then it's very clear, far and away, it's the educator in the room, far and away. Which means, if we want a world-class education system, if we can't offer world-class pay, then we at least need to offer really, really, really competitive pay and benefits, like really competitive. If we expect to get more than the leftovers that the other districts don't want, or long-term subs, or agency personnel, right? We have 120 sped positions, I think, that we can't fill, that we're having to do with agency personnel, which is costing us more money than what we're offering, and the agency only has to give us a body. And so what's happening is, every day, there's a new person, right? And I hear this all the time, that the sped teachers spend like 30 minutes of their day getting the agency personnel caught up, and they're like, it's getting nowhere, and the kids feel it. I mean, this disruption is immense. So prioritizing teachers, the educator in the room, is going to be key to get us where we need to be, and that's going to take really competitive salaries. The second thing I would really like you to consider is that I know that we have reserves. We are, I believe, legally required to have something like 3%, but I think we're operating at, we want, we're going for like 6% to 10%, something in that range. I think the rule of thumb should be today's dollars for today's kids, right? Today's dollars for today's kids. The money sitting there is doing nobody any good. It's not doing a single child any good. I understand that we want to protect ourselves for crisis down the road. There's two things. The union is asking for you to spend that money. We will take the leadership if we get in a crunch, and you say, you told us to spend it, well, now you've got to face some tough decisions. We'll face that. But the other thing is, if today isn't a crisis that warrants spending that money that you're supposedly saving it for, what is the threshold, right? What is this threshold of crisis, so you're like, well, when it gets this bad, then we'll use that? I would say it's right now. It's right now. We need that money, spend today's money and today's kids. And then the third thing is, you know, it's kind of a worn-out adage, but you know, the adage that your budget reflects your values, right? And I'm hoping that at the end of the day, when we're done negotiating, we look at Burbank's budget, that it truly does reflect the value of putting students first, which means we're prioritizing amazing teachers in the classrooms, which is what our students need more than anything. And I think if we do these things, we're going to come out at the other end with an amazing agreement and really set the stage for great things to come. So again, thank you so much, and have a great rest of your evening and meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Ms. Diana Abasta, and that's the last-ish public comment in-person card that I have at this time.
Good evening, President Ferguson, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Hill, members of the district and community. My name is Diana Abasta, and I am an English teacher at Burbank High School, and I'm also the very proud president of the Burbank Teachers Association, these colleagues who are here with me today. First of all, congratulations to those of you in your new positions on the board, or you're new to the board. Being on a board of education is not for the faint of heart. It requires hard work, dedication, a working knowledge of schools, and all that goes on inside and out, and a genuine desire to work with all stakeholders. The employee's working environment is our students' learning environment. Right now, teachers are still dealing with heavy workload and added responsibilities and pressures. It isn't just about walking into a classroom and starting to teach. It's dealing with class size and trying to meet the academic and social and emotional needs of our students. It's about getting to know our students and recognizing their areas of strengths and weaknesses. It's about assessing, grading, and trying to provide the resources they need. It's about trying to build relationships with parents so that together, we can ensure their child does not slip through the cracks. We need adequate numbers of campus supervisors at our schools to help keep our students and staff safe. We need resources to address the habitual disruptions occurring in middle school. There needs to be a setting where our middle school students can work in a smaller setting and get the services they need. Teachers must be able to follow their progressive discipline plans that include class suspension. Parent involvement in education when it comes to the home learning environment and discipline should be offered. All need to learn the value of good sportsmanship and exercise civility. We all want BUSD to be the first stop and not the second stop or no stop for education and for employment. We used to be. We want to provide our students with the best, highly qualified teachers, counselors, speech and language pathologists, and nurses. Teachers won't stay for bottom-of-the-barrel pay, nor will custodians, instructional aides, and food service workers. We cannot support a healthy education environment if we are not being given adequate resources to do our jobs, affordable health benefits, and a competitive salary. We will continue to have to pay more for agency people and consultants. We have sped teachers and SLPs who need extra time to give their students quality service. They need time to prepare meetings with parents, consult with other service providers, interface with general education teachers in order to support their students. The truth is, the money saved by compensating teachers, counselors, SLP, and nurses from the beginning would save the district so much more and would vastly reduce the turnover rate we have now and early retirements, although you probably might want me to go. When employees feel they have some say in their working environment, that's equity. When employees are given adequate and effective resources, that's equity. When employees are paid competitively and are treated as professionals, that's equity. The first interim budget update was presented in December, and of course, there was talk of the structural deficit in spite of the double-digit COLA we received this past year. Education funding surpassed expectations in 2022, 2023, and the governor's January budget proposal shows that even as we face statewide revenue shortfalls and a possible recession, education funding will be protected and increased above what the district projected for next year. Now is the time to invest in student needs. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other speakers who would like to speak in person, with the exception of the one card? Seeing none, we'll close the in-person public comment, and I will ask that we move to the virtual public comment to Mr. Rick Bonk, who will introduce an in-person speaker. That's why I've been kind of doing the referencing all night.
Thank you, and greetings from Park City, Utah, President Ferguson, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Hill, district staff, parents, and the community. I'm honored to be here and introduce you to the Leadership Burbank Class of 2023. If you're not familiar with the Leadership Burbank community, it is a community-based organization that offers a nine-month Leadership Professional Development Program for people who live, work, or have significant investment in Burbank. I'm honored to be part of that 2023 team. Each year, Leadership Burbank focuses on a team project supporting Burbank. We are excited about our project and the benefits to students and staff throughout the district. I would like to introduce you to my esteemed team members, Hospitalian Collins and Lauren Connor, who will tell you a little bit about our project tonight.
Well, good evening, everybody, Board of Education, Superintendent, and all of our Burbank community. As Mr. Bonk said, I'm here with Lauren Connor, who's seated behind me, waving her hand, as she's the project manager for our Leadership Burbank Class of 2023 project. And we're here, we're very excited to tell you about the project that was selected by our class this season or semester, because it directly affects, and in a good way, affects our BUSD community and our BUSD students. So we're excited to come here and tell you, if no reason besides the fact that it affects your students and affects your schools. So as Rick told us what Leadership Burbank stands for, this could be a plethora of things, right? And as the ethos of our group, we decided that this was a project that was very important to us, because it was not just a project that we were going to complete, but that there was an education piece, and we was dealing with our students who, as a board, I imagine that that's part of what we do, we educate our students. We started with the premise that one of the biggest issues that we have, that we're leaving for our children, is our environment. And one of the biggest issues that we deal with, with our environment, is plastics. Plastics are a huge problem. Plastics just continue to break down into smaller and smaller pieces, they don't ever actually go away, they just become smaller pieces of plastic. As we were researching and trying to get to explain and describe how big of an issue this was, some of the most daunting facts that we learned are that four to 12 million metric tons of plastic enter into the ocean annually. So every single year, four to 12 million metric tons of plastic enter the ocean. I don't know if you know what that means, that's a very, very large number, but when you put it into sort of a descriptive way, it describes that that covers, there's enough plastic to cover the entire coastline of the earth every single year. And the number, that number is expected to triple in the next 20 years. So... So obviously, we can't fix this huge global problem, but we can do our part. And one of the numbers that were looked at, that when we were considering this, is that when we were to all do our little, little piece, which is just to reduce the plastic that we can easily produce, we can save about 1,460 plastic bottles annually per person. And that's, I mean, when you think about it, I can't fix everything, but I can fix one thing. And if I can fix 1,460 bottles per year, per me, that's a big thing. And what we can do is we can start with our students. Those are usually our group that are most eager to change, are most eager to learn. They're the ones who are going to follow sort of the program that we set for them. And since that's the key to our future, then that's where we wanted to start, with our students. So our idea was to put bottle, water bottle filling stations at each of our elementary schools. Obviously, we have more schools than just our 11 elementary schools, but some of our high schools already have those water bottle refill stations, and one of our middle schools already does. So we figured we need to start somewhere. Let's start with our elementary schools. And obviously, if we're able to have a super successful program, then that's a number that we can increase and attach, and attack some of our other schools. So we looked into the stations themselves. They actually magically are around everywhere when you look around. They exist at the Olive Recreation Program. They're at our Burbank Airport. They're at sporting events. They're everywhere. It's just you need to look for them. But the one place that they're not is in our elementary schools. So that's the project that we've determined. We're going to try and fundraise money for all of our 11 elementary schools to also include two filters for each one of these stations. We will also work toward getting those things installed in all of our schools. We've already been in discussions with the principals about a particular location for them. They have to be located indoors. They have to be near an existing water line. So that's the plan. That's the project, and we are hoping to get all of these done in short order. And we'll see with delays and everything how quickly we can get those done, but that's the plan. We are kicking off our program and our fundraising very, very shortly. Our QR codes and donation levels and everything will be posted on our website soon. And obviously, when that's done, we'll happily send that to the board for consideration for our community. So that's all I have. Thank you, everything. Thank you so much for everything that you do for our children. Really do appreciate it, and hopefully, we can do a little part from ourselves. Thank you.
Amazing. Thank you so much. Any final speakers in public comment? If not, I'll close public comment at this time and ask for staff responses.
Thank you, President Ferguson, and thank you to the speakers this evening. Mr. Norberg and Ms. Abasta, thank you for coming out with our other teachers, SLPs and nurses this evening. And counselors. But our next negotiation session is next week, February 16th, and we look forward to continuing the conversation. So thank you for coming this evening. To Leadership Burbank Class of 2023, Rick and Haas, thank you so much for sharing the project. We're really looking forward to partnering with you to make sure that we can be successful and get that in as soon as possible. I know we want to get a couple in before May, so we're excited about that, and we will share information as you pass it along to us. Thank you all to the speakers tonight.
Looking to my colleagues for board responses, starting with Ms. Tabbett.
Well, thank you to all the speakers who came out tonight. I appreciate your thoughts and opinions, and a lot of you, both of you, Mr. Norberg and Mrs. Abasta, thank you for your, your thoughts and your ideas. I certainly appreciate you coming out, and I do hear what you have to say. And yes, there's a lot going on, and there's a lot that we need to work on. And being able to call ourselves a world-class educational system, Mr. Norberg, is something that I would hope to achieve. And I, I don't, I think we have amazing teachers and SLPs and special ed teachers that do amazing amounts of work every single day. And you're appreciated, and they're the ones that will get us there. And yes, we need to support them. So thank you very much for that. Also, Mrs. Abasta, you brought up something, but let me come back to that because I want to talk to the Leadership Burbank folks. Yay! That is totally awesome. I appreciate that. But, you know, as a board member, I'm thinking about those two middle schools that don't have water bottle fillers. But they do? So everybody will have them when you're done? Okay. Well, Leadership Burbank Class of 2013 here, and I'd be interested because we raised in a large amount of money that I don't think we used all of, and it's probably sitting somewhere, and there's probably, nope, it's gone. Never mind. Oh, well, I try. Anyway, great. Can't wait to hear how we can help support that. We'll go with that. Mrs. Abasta, you brought up this evening, one of your comments was about sportsmanship and bringing about the right quality to our high school campuses, the type of messages that our students, our athletes, our coaches are putting out. We had a parent come our last meeting to talk about that, and there's been a whole plethora of social media posts that, in all honesty, do not make our school campuses look like they're the best sports, both sides, goes both ways. There's been lots of conversation in the community about what goes on and how, and who's responsible, and whose head is going to roll because of this. It's not been pretty. So I did get asked with the help of Dr. Paramo, who's not here tonight, and he's been amazing, and after a few incidents of working with our staffs, and we had our video production classes at both high schools work on a joint project that went out to parents last night, went out to the students at the high schools this morning, talking about the importance of good sportsmanship out, out there, and why it's important to the athletes themselves. And I thought it was really well done, and I just wanted to thank that group for coming together and working so hard to make a positive message to our community about how important it is to support an athlete or anybody, because it's not just athletes. Supporting the kids in your class, supporting, you know, the kids who do the spelling bee, some elementary schools have those, and on and on, in a positive way, just by cheering them on and saying, you know, go whoever they happen to be. And I thought that was a great message, and I was very proud of everybody involved. So I want to thank those folks. Amy Nguyen at Burbank High, Reeann, and I knew I'd forget her last name, at John Burrows High School. I just met her recently. Meshcat? Meshcat. Reeann Meshcat. Ryan, Reeann, Ryan?
Ryan Meshcat.
Boy, I am really a mess because that's, yes. Ryan Meshcat at John Burrows, who's the video production teacher there. She's amazing and did a lot of work on getting this project out. Dr. Paramo, as I said, both high school principals, our athletic directors, worked really hard to get the positive message going. And I, I really, really, really like the community support, our school's support, in making sure that our students know our expectations of them and that we expect them to be good, positive sports and be the role model for everybody else. So thank you for that. And I think I've said enough tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Ponsor, Kim Kar.
Thank you. So thank you to all of the speakers who came out tonight, but it's really especially lovely to see all of their staff faces. Mr. Norberg, Ms. Abasta, thank you especially for starting with our shared values and our shared mission here, because I do think that there's a lot of that. And it feels like we're kind of starting negotiation season, as it were, with an assumption of best intentions. And I do think, I think that's the way to move forward. I've taken a lot of what you said, and I'm processing it. I think we want to do a lot of the same things. And so I want to, I want to keep having this conversation in the, in the spirit of negotiations. To Leadership Burbank, thank you for coming out. I had heard about this project. I was very excited about it. And I want to especially thank you for having the forethought, foresight perhaps, of including filters. Because as someone who has worked on projects sometimes where people don't necessarily think a couple, a couple of years down the road, when you have to replace things or repair things, that is much appreciated. So thank you for taking this on as your project. I think it's really important. I think it's going to be great for kids and great for our community. So thank you.
Korkogu Konian.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Norberg, not only for your comments, but also for inviting me to come and talk to your students. These are students who are newcomers, who have language barriers, and I guess I was popular as asked to come back twice. So, and I hear you, and I do want to make sure that we talk about world-class education. We've talked several times in the past, and same thing to Ms. Abasta. I know we're going in, you know, into negotiations. But, you know, today I was in Burbank High School, because I've also been going there on a monthly basis, talking to another group of students who do not speak English, who are new here. I do want to acknowledge our principal there, Julie Marcus, did I say Marcus? And Assistant Principal Robert Mohammed, who has been inviting me. And you should see, the first time I went there, the students were like, who is this guy today? Sorry, let me turn that down. Today, I was actually followed by a lot of the students coming out and talking to me about career options, how they can really move up. One of them wants to be a doctor, one wants to be a lawyer. So I promised next time I'm going to bring a doctor and a lawyer to talk to the students. But it just amazes me because I was where those students were, where I didn't speak the language, and I didn't know what I was going to do. And I appreciate what the students do and how they, you know, are really moving up. But also our teachers, because I happened to walk into the Pepper Alley today. I went a little early. And just, you know, just to see our teachers and all staff and counselors and everyone just dealing with all these students running around, and how much fun it was, how organized it was, how respectful the students were, that takes a lot. And I always, and I'll challenge people who always question what our teachers or counselors do, go spend like 30 minutes on campus and to see what a difficult job it is to not only, you know, manage all these young students, but also to be and to listen to them. Because I just felt like the students were bonding with the teachers, and it was just a positive experience. So thank you for inviting me. I will be back again next month with my guest speakers. And I even gave the students my cell number. They're texting me and giving me their information. They want to learn more. They want to get more involved. Well, you know, I know, but it's okay. I don't have a home number, so. With that said, when it comes to Leadership Burbank, I do agree with you. So I am in the process of getting my master diver certification, and I have run into what the plastic becomes in the ocean. It becomes a gunk, and it covered my actually regulator once, and it was very difficult to breathe. I had to go up. This stuff doesn't go away, and in the ocean, it becomes a plastic gunk, which kills animals, birds. I mean, it's in the fish now. There is actually a floating island of plastic, size of state of Texas, in the middle of the ocean. So I appreciate what you're doing. I do also want to acknowledge that we do have also an eco council now for the district that you could work with. I know my colleague and, you know, been participating. It's a wonderful idea. I'm very supportive of it. And if you need also help with talking to people about making this, you know, come true in terms of support, also financially, let me know, because there are a lot of people who are very interested as well. But what's out there right now is alarming. It's getting worse and worse. And I can tell you, we're someone who just dives on a regular basis. I see less fish. I see more sea, sea urchins, which is a dangerous factor because they eat kelp. And our oceans are suffocating. So thank you for doing this. Every step is important. And with that, that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Vice President Weisberg.
Thank you. Couple of very quick thank yous to, I have to scroll up to the top of my notes. Yeah, so I say this every meeting, I'll say it again. If you see me typing, I'm taking notes because I can't remember anything, not because I'm doing something else. Teacher brain can't function past four o'clock. I did want to briefly thank Mr. President Ferguson and I were able to attend the Burbank PTA Council's National PTA Art Reflections Award Ceremony at Muir. It was amazing. We got to be like the Van of Whites and hand out all the prizes. But it was really amazingly done. It was great to see all the student artwork, their film editing, their photography, their writing, and present them with some awards. So that was really wonderful. And also wanted to thank everybody at Bret Hart for allowing me to sit in on their inclusion collaborative. It was a really interesting spirited conversation, and I look forward to seeing the positive work they're going to be doing there moving forward. Okay. So want to acknowledge and wish everyone a meaningful Black History Month. Every month is Black History Month, but this month in particular, it's nice to be able to focus a little bit on the excellence and contributions of Black Americans in spite of continued oppression, which leads me to Mr. Schlosselberger's comment.
Get my name right, goddammit.
Get mine right, my friend.
Okay. First warning.
A couple of things. And, and I have, I have a rule that I'm really not going to respond much to you unless something that you say is overtly discriminatory. And so tonight, I'm going to address the comments you made in regards to the murder of Tyree Nichols and simply say that his death is not the fault of our teachers. It is not the fault of our schools. It is not the fall of our, fault of our administrators. It is the fault of systemic oppression that goes unchecked. And you can sit up here and you can blame me because, again, I take up all that space in your head rent-free. But you spit on his memory and those who've been brutalized because of the systemic oppression when you blame our teachers and our students. I know you get here and you look at the agenda and you try to find something to be mad about. Have you looked at the statistics? Have you seen the excellence of our students? Have you seen the work that our teachers do pre and post COVID? I doubt you have. You do have time to look up how much tuition is at the school where I teach. So you got to have time to look up the statistics of excellence at our schools. Do we have work to do? Heck, yeah. Do we have lots of ways that we need to grow? Absolutely. But to turn around and blame it on our education system is embarrassing for you, and it's disrespectful to everybody in this space and to everybody who is harmed and is dealing emotionally with what happened this week. And I'm grateful to Dr. Hill for sending out that email and expressing that we, as a district, are offering counseling and support for any student or any family or any teacher or staff member who was impacted by yet another senseless loss of young Black life. But you mock it. And you mock him, and you mock the loss. I hope people are taking up Dr. Hill on his, his offer. We have amazing resources, and we really want people to use them. So I would ask you to please do some research before you get up here and diminish and debase people, meeting after meeting, because you're mad at me for not standing for the pledge. I get it. We all get it. We hear it every meeting. Be mad at me all you want, but stop making other people collateral damage because this is your Thursday night hobby. To Mr. Norberg and Ms. Abasta, thank you. To all the teachers that are here, thank you. To the counselors, to everybody who's here, I have like 82,000 papers to grade, so I know you being here right now, you have a million things weighing on you that you need to be doing. You may not want to be doing them, but you need to be doing them. I echo what has been said, that the, the acknowledgement that we all, we all want the same things, and it's really difficult getting there. I'm really excited about what's going to happen at the negotiation table. I also want to thank the teachers who've been reaching out via email. It's been really wonderful to read what you've been sending. It takes a lot of time to, to craft these emails that we're getting. I know we're all getting them, so thank you. We do read them. I was having a conversation with somebody else about our one-time funding, and, and they said, you know, she worries that we just get up here and we kind of rubber stamp things, and we don't have conversations, and we don't... and we don't have conversations, and we don't negotiate, and we don't push back. And Dr. Hill can tell you that is not true. But I did want to let everybody know, if you don't already know, that the conversations that we have are robust, and there's no sort of rubber stamp. And while we don't ourselves get involved in negotiations, I know we look forward to hearing about them, and we have conversations all the time about budget. And it weighs on us, and we're very lucky to have people who do a phenomenal job and spend an enormous amount of time helping guide those conversations. But I look forward to seeing what happens on the 16th. I look forward to hearing from all of you again. Look forward to Armon's phone. But I do hope, and we said this before, I'll say it again, I do hope that people will reach out to us and not just wait for a school board meeting. Ms. Abasto, you're really wonderful about that. So, please, reach out to us. We are available. I have office hours, 4 to 6, every Friday. You can hop on Zoom or in person and touch base. But thank you to everybody for coming out, and a huge thank you to Leadership Burbank. This is awesome. And what a great teaching tool for everybody in all of the schools to have the same kind of conversation that you had with us, you had with us tonight. So, I know that I'll be trying to get people to donate like crazy, and just want to thank you for choosing to invest in our schools. I think it's a great model to display. The last thing I'll say before we close out is, I was able to sit in virtually on the city council meeting on July 17th. And I wanted to say, just for people who maybe got a little bit anxious, and I wrote this down, so I can, that yes, there are, in regards to the bond, just so nobody freaks out, the bond is actually going to help reduce and defer some of the needed rate increases for utilities. So, I would encourage you, if you're really interested in the details, to watch the meeting. This should have a positive impact on the community and in so doing in our schools. So, if you're nervous about it, reach out to council. I know they'd love to talk with you about it and dispel any misinformation. So, thank you to everybody, and I look forward to future conversations.
Thank you, Dr. Weisberg. Thank you for everybody coming out tonight. For members of the public at home, our teachers and SLPs and counselors are here tonight, and they're holding up different signs, and I want to read those so that you can understand what we're seeing as well. It's "All for Kids." "All for the Kids." "Burbank Students and Educators Deserve Better." "Class Size Matters to Kids." "Sped Students and Families Need Support Now." Burbank Teachers Association, I think that's the back of a flag, but I see you. "It's All for the Kids." "It's All for the Kids." "It's All for the Kids." And "Burbank Educators," "Students and Educators Deserve Better." Heard. Loud and clear. Again, I say this every time, but I mean it from the bottom of my heart. I know you've had a full day. So, you coming here after a full day means a lot, and that investment means a lot to me, and I see that and totally understand that. Negotiations work as they work. Having said that, your communication is invaluable to us. I hear from a number of parents, as it relates to our sped population in particular, and their concerns. That helps craft the questions I ask and the resources I hope to identify when I ask questions about the budget. So, when you share emails with me that give me specific evidence, that give me specific things to move forward with, and all of us, it helps us to be more effective at identifying pathways to solutions for those problems. They don't always look like we want them to look, frankly, but it gives us detailed, a detailed pathway to move forward. And really, when we're talking about especially our student populations, the more creativity we can deploy now is critical, because every day we lose, we can't get back. And that, I live with. You know, we all live with that in very real ways as leaders of this institution, who care very much about all of our student populations. You know, I've seen some parent leaders in the audience tonight who I think were very vocal about, you know, trying to bring back activities and bring back experiences for students, because they saw the impacts that not having those activities had on social development, you name it. But we're trying to marry a lot of different worlds here, both the academic and the social. And you are a bigger partner in that than you know. So, please, continue to communicate. We will go through the negotiation process. We have, and we continue to demonstrate in every way, shape, or form, that we intend to negotiate in good faith. We do have, you know, this threshold that we have to manage of risk, understanding what is coming down the pipeline. Those crystal balls are not clear, otherwise, we would all be buying lottery tickets, frankly, right now, and y'all would be paid to the nines, because that's where my values lie. Having said that, it matters for us to hear the urgency. It matters for us to hear the upcoming potential problems in the long term. You guys are the professionals, so us hearing it from you matters. So, again, I want to thank you for your time and being here tonight. Getting to the specific speakers tonight. Mr. Schlossman, thank you for identifying potential areas for us to recognize, potential community partners for us to recognize. I think that's important, particularly the employers who work with our special need populations. You bet. And so, the board is having a board retreat on the 18th. We are going to be discussing recognition protocols in that time, and my hope is, is that through that conversation, we can more regularly address that, and address that in ways that allow us to do it without necessarily commandeering two, three hours of board time when the public is really trying to get to us and communicate. So, those, that's a broader discussion that we'll have on the 18th. That's a public meeting, so folks can participate. But I want you to know that I've heard you on that front, that we've all heard you on that front, and I understand it's a repeated comment, so, but I've heard you, and we are going to have that conversation. Having said that, your comments on Tyree Nichols do not represent the values of this community and are so far off-base. The images in the video that were released created a national situation and called upon people who have seen enough already in their lives to once again, no, to swallow it back and to once again give the benefit of the doubt to the power system around it, that they're going to be protected by it, when video evidence shows repeated systemic oppression occurring.
Of course, that's what I'm saying.
Second warning. I am tired of our kids growing up in a world where this behavior is normalized. I think we all are. And we've got to, because they're so worth it. Dr. Weisberg talked about the PTA Reflections Meeting Awards. Oh, these kids, oh my gosh. Seeing them after so many years, this was the first time PTA Council was able to put this on again. And thank you, by the way, to all the site chairs, and the site presidents, and the council PTA who worked so hard. This is so, this is a logistical nightmare to manage, so God bless everybody who went through this and managed this. But the joy these kiddos had when they came up to get their little ribbons and trophies, oh my gosh. That unbridled joy is something we should absolutely cultivate as a value system in this community. But we can't do that when people don't have equal access. We can't do that when those kids don't have equal access, and when the images on the TV that they see are systemically one set of people in blurry images, losing their lives. Not okay. We, as a community, have to speak out in these moments, and it's important we do, and stand with people from all different walks of life, because this is not okay, and this is not who we are. And we deserve to build, America is an unfinished democracy. It is our job to finish this part, clearly. We keep getting reminders from the universe. I keep having, you know, I'm at that point in my life where I'm like, the universe is teaching me lessons, right? And I'm starting to listen. Okay, tuning in. Lifelong learning. And this is just something for the nation, right? We keep hearing it. We've got to learn together, folks. We've got to struggle together. I'm not perfect. I've been called out by Mr. Schlossman. But I've learned, and I've sought understanding. And as the leaders of educational institutions, I hope we can do more as a community and as an educational institution to offer people to grow, opportunities to grow, in whatever way we can. Adult school learning, you name it, let's figure that out. Partnering with parent groups, you name it, let's figure that out. And I will ask that we adjourn tonight's meeting in Tyree Nichols' memory. Mr. Norberg, I have encountered your energy that you bring to the classroom year after year, which, you know, is a testament to you. And I see the same energy here tonight represented, and I just want to thank you for your time. I agree on the values-based negotiating. I believe that. I believe you hear that from us in frankly, a way you haven't in history. So, we are, we are moving. We are evolving. How we can address the issues, some seem too big, some seem too small. But you have a commitment, at least from this board member, and I know in spirit from all board members, to work towards, you know, again, a more compassionate contract, one that understands the burdens that people are going through, one that understands the challenges that you all are up against with this population of young people who have gone through so much. I get it. So, thanks for your time tonight. To our Leadership Burbank folks, God bless you. Thank you so much. So, I have to tell you, this is, so first of all, full disclosure, I have a single-use plastic cup here. Okay? But as the universe is teaching me lessons, Ms. Tabit does too. So, there we go. Having said that, this is actually something I'm actually trying to be very intentional about, and it takes real intentionality to get this. The statistic that actually triggered me on this was that we roughly ingest about a credit card's worth of plastic in a week.
Oh, my God.
Unsubscribe, right? Nobody signed up for that. Okay? But to think about that problem in such a real way, in such a material way, we all know the body remembers. We've got to do that work now. So, I want to thank you for doing this. This is great. This gives us plenty of time to start training elementary school kids to bring home your water bottles, along with the lunch pails, so our, you know, our, we also may want to figure out frankly, disinfecting concepts, because this is not the same as leaving a sweater that we can put in a lost and found pile, you know, and to keep everybody safe. So, again, mold tends to grow in these things when they're not cleaned out, things like that. So, this is stuff we need to think through. Additionally, I love hearing about this. This is the first time I'm hearing about it, though. So, as a trustee, I want to be able to build things like this into replenishment schedules, and I'm glad you did the thinking. I'm held accountable if we don't, you know? And so, I, so to staff, I would like heads up on that, on those things. Not so we can say no, but so we can plan and accept and maintain. Ms. Tabit talked about her project. Boom, gone. You know, there are a ton of Leadership Burbank projects that I think are in some parts gone. A ton of Leadership Burbank projects that frankly, have not kind of withstood the test of time. We owe it to the dollars that we're fundraising, which I know we all work hard on fundraising here, to make sure those dollars go the distance, and so that our community doesn't feel that we're just a black hole, not worthy of investment. We absolutely are. You should see these kids. They're just amazing. So, to our leaders present and to the rest of your class, you know, I, without objection, I'd like to find a time to recognize you, to say thank you fundamentally for helping us on this, this kind of eco pathway. I was called out a little bit earlier for, you know, trying to go for solar panels. We have solar panels. So, that's a good thing in our schools, because it offsets some of the costs, right? And their finance and bonds have paid for them in this community. Where I want to go deeper, right, is conserving water. We see the headlines in the Los Angeles Times around the Colorado River, the devastating impacts that water usage is having there, seeing if we can convert to drought-tolerant native California plant species that frankly, won't attract bees, that could potentially, there's a lot of considerations. But there's a number of ways that we can start, in really smart ways. Again, installing refillable water stations. Who knew? Right? All of these have an impact, all of these free up resources that in long term, we can put back into the mission. So, thank you for being part of the innovation component of our district, for pushing us. Again, I want to hear about these projects coming up. So, again, if there's an opportunity to augment this as well, okay, we want to install a water bottle fountain, and then we also want to install this right next door to it, let's be able to have those conversations, so we can not have to knock two holes in the wall at two different times. Last but not least, I'm excited to hear about the PSA. I don't agree with the staff approach 100% on the path forward, on the sportsmanship issue that we are actively managing. Having said that, I respect the path forward that's been identified, and I need to know that when we're moving forward, I'm happy to hear from Ms. Tabit about the PSA. All of us need to be informed about those PSAs when those go out. So, I, I did not, so, okay. So, as a broader strategy, not necessarily piecemeal, that would be helpful, just, or again, general points for feedback, things like that would be helpful. Dr. Hill says that he sent it, so if I missed it, I'll apologize upfront. Having said that, you know, I think that this is, for me, a big enough issue. I want check-ins on the higher-profile issues. That would be helpful for me, just so that we're confirming, and we demonstrated for the public, we have kind of a track record of getting lost in translation here, so let's make the extra effort to check in and to continue to move forward as we address this. To our educators, to our parents, and most importantly, to our athletes, you are part of the solution in this. We have two, two high schools that regularly compete. We have three amazing high schools in total. But it is up to us. I'm a proud bulldog. I was talking with Ms. Ceterio earlier about being from a divided family. My sister went to Burrows, I went to Burbank High. Dark times. Having said that, we celebrate everybody, because we're, at the end of the day, we're all one community. And that, even Ms. Tabit, who I think is the most ardent of bulldogs up here, has gotten to a place, right, where we're all celebrating everybody. We've got to set this example. So, as leaders of this community, asking you to play a part in that. If you see a friend or a loved one who's getting a little heated, tell them to simmer down a bit. They can hear it best from you, and not from one of our personnel, who frankly, again, has worked an entire day on a school site. Don't make it their problem. Don't make us have to kick you out of a kid's football game or a sports game. Don't be that person, please. With that, we'll conclude public comment. Thank you all for coming down. We appreciate you. With that, we'll move to item 11A, Reports on Facilities and Technology Projects. And by the way, we have consolidated the periods of public comment, so we will not be having a second, we will not be having a second period. We made that adjustment to the agenda. We are not discriminating against you. We have an opportunity to consolidate our public comment period. We have done that. That has been a past practice of the board. Okay, this is your final warning before you have repeatedly called out and disrupted the meeting. The next time, I will ask the superintendent to reach out to the police department and have you removed. Mr. Schlossman, this is not, this is not the example we need. And I know, I know your intentions are to contribute in a way that will help this district. What you are doing now is not that process. Mr. Cantwell.
Board President Ferguson, board members, staff, and community. My first presentation for the evening is to identify the facility and technology projects in your board agenda this evening. We have only a few. The first one is the Walt Disney, again, another project at Disney, the approval of additive change in the amount of $4,000. This was one final inspection related to the storm runoff, and so this is just a final change based on the timing of completion of the project and the need to monitor the water drainage during the construction.
I'm glad to see, sorry if I could jump in for a second. Drainage has been an issue in the district for quite some time, probably since I've been on the board, because we have these small periods of torrential rains, and everyone goes, "Oh, my goodness." And then the rain goes away, and we move on to other things. So, thank you for that, to make sure it's done in the beginning, so we can alleviate the problems before they even happen. So, thank you. problems before they even happen. So thank you.
All right. Well, we're working the PowerPoint. The next one is, again, at Disney, and it was the return of our storage containers to Disney. I know that was a topic that we, again, discussed in this boardroom a few occasions. And so the ratification of a word of contract for $2,300 to return the storage containers, which have been done, was done a few weeks ago.
And the storage containers are for what items?
That is the safety bin, as well as there are a number of items that are PTAs, and then our custodial department has a storage bin as well.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify why parents had come up and asked for those. So thank you for returning those.
Absolutely. We have a notice of completion, a quarter million dollars for the underground site utilities and plumbing. So you're going to start seeing a few of our upcoming board meetings, just notice of completions for aspects of the Disney two-story project, so this is one of those. And lastly, another notice of completion, $454,000 for 21st Century Classroom retrofit, the classroom technology retrofit project. Do you have any questions on the facility items and technology this evening? Yes?
Thank you. Not a question. Question perhaps not for you, but maybe Dr. Hill. I know we've been talking a lot about when we get to go and see all the fabulousness together. Do we have a sense of when we might, like, I just want to go and celebrate all this amazing, hard work and just take a minute to, like, dance around at the site? So do you have a sense of when we might be able to do that?
We've been working with Mr. Maxwell, our new director of facilities. There's a couple punch list items that they're working through. So once that's complete, we're going to schedule a ribbon cutting so that we can do a formal, formal celebration. But in the meantime, the board would like to have a visit, to visit the campus. We can schedule that in the meantime, but the formal ribbon cutting will be, I think he's at around spring break.
Yeah.
Okay.
The ball wall is the main item.
Ah, the ball wall.
Yes.
Thank you.
Could I ask that we begin scheduling that sidewalk for individual board members or for groups of two, so that way, at a time that's conducive for the campus? And that will allow us frankly to have any questions that we have answered before a nice ribbon cutting? So we're not sitting there as we have it sometimes, not due to lack of effort, but, you know, what's going on over there? So that's helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And I know it came up at the Facilities Oversight Committee as well, that folks want to do a walk, so thank you for coordinating that. And as someone who is on this campus fairly regularly, though not in the new building, it looks amazing. It's really, it's really wonderful. I think it really came together really well. So thank you for making sure that everything gets squared away.
Thank you.
I love hearing that. So that's good things.
I'm like trying not to look, when I go there, I'm like, I just want to be so surprised.
All good things. Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Cantwell? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 11B, and he's staying up here, for the report on the governor's budget update for the 2023-2024 year.
Sure thing. All right, let's see if we can get the PowerPoint working this time. There we go. All right. Again, Board President Ferguson, board members and colleagues, this evening I'll give a brief presentation on the governor's January budget proposal. As I was looking back at my predecessors' presentations last few years, I was a little jealous. It was a lot more exciting and positive news to share. This one is not, not, you know, the sky is not falling by any means, but we had some really, really positive years last few years, and next year certainly is not, not shaping up to look quite the same. Just a reminder to orient ourselves where we are in the budget cycle. Our fiscal year, as you well know, July 1 to June 30, we're funded from the state coming in, you know, at various intervals during that period, but the state budget process really kicks off right now in January, or I'm sorry, just a few weeks ago in January. The governor presents his budget priorities and his budget proposal for the upcoming fiscal year. The next four months will be a period where the legislature and the governor are looking closely at a number of economic factors, as well as certainly there's some political arm wrestling taking place. In May, the governor will come out with a May revision. Again, it's a revision because he's revising what he came out with just a few weeks ago. At that point, there's a 30-day rush to the finish line where the governor and the legislature are working together to try to pass a budget. So legislature's responsibility to do that by June 15th, or they don't get paid. So somehow, we always have budgets passed on time now. And then the budget gets adopted by June 30th, and we are expected to then use that funding in our upcoming fiscal year starting July 1. Typically, when they adopt their budget, we have the opportunity to make plans based on their approved budget. You'll see to this, this evening, that they are kind of changing some of the rules on us because one of the funding sources we'll talk about, that you approved our spending plan for at the last meeting, they're now threatening to actually pull back an allocation that's already fully approved. It's in state law, and CDE is ready to distribute the funds in just a few months. And right now, the governor's suggesting that that's actually on the table to be, to be pulled back. So we'll get there in a moment. This evening, I'm going to focus actually on pulling excerpts from a presentation that Dr. Neiman and myself attended, presented by School Services of California. School Service is one of the leading organizations in California that school districts rely upon, primarily for business services, but they have a plethora of consulting and support across the spectrum to support school districts in a variety of administrative roles. So I want to give full credit to them. These slides that you'll see are from their presentation. They're not my creation. I am not going to actually go over in detail every one of these slides. I gave you a lot, but I wanted to make sure that you had their information, so if you have questions, I'm ready to answer those, but I'm going to just hit some highlights. And so the kind of the bookends that I want you to think about as possible scenarios that I really, I took away from the presentation was they said that this, this budget is not rosy, but it's also not recessionary. You know, it's somewhere in between. Now, we're going to spend the next few months trying to identify whether or not the state economy is entering recession. I personally have my fears. And if it does, then this is going to change in May. And so something that, again, for us to be paying attention to and to really be advocating for is ensuring that education does remain a budget priority, which it is in this January proposal, even if we see a continued downturn in the economic, economic condition of our state. So something to understand, again, overall, the budget is actually projecting about $20 billion less in state expenditures for this upcoming year. However, again, education is largely untouched with those cuts. That's largely a factor of Prop 98. And so again, just, I know many of you are familiar, but a reminder, Prop 98 is a change to our constitution, a proposition that guaranteed a certain base level of funding to education. In the current circumstance, what it does is it guarantees us 38.5% of general fund revenues that come to the state. Our state's economy and our state's, I should say, the revenue that our state collects for government purposes is extremely volatile. It's really reliant on three main sources: sales tax, income tax, as well as corporate, corporate tax, corporation tax. And so again, there is, if we enter recession, the ability for things to change pretty drastically pretty quickly. The good news is, though, that the governor didn't have to tap into any of the reserves to be able to have a balanced budget moving into the 23-24 year. But like I said, in order to do that, he did get pretty creative. You can see that last bullet point, the Governor Newsom surprised us by sweeping a third of the funding for the arts, arts, music, and instructional materials block grant. Our district, we were expecting Burbank would get about $8.5 million. If this actually goes through the sweep, we'd lose close to $3 million. That's already been, again, allocated to the district. Okay? You know, one of the things I just want to, again, as we talk about how likely, how much can we bank on the January proposal, I really do want to spend just a few slides talking about the overall economy and, again, the likelihood that we have that numbers stay, stay consistent from where they are presently. This first one just shows you the US GDP over the past few years. You can see that actually in 2022 that we did have two consecutive quarters of negative GDP growth. Historically, that would typically be one of the definitions of a recession. However, for a variety of reasons, most economists are not quite ready to say that we were in a recession, but as we look at the future, there's a number of reasons to think that may be on the horizon. As you well know, inflation, this is difficult to see, at least on the screens, but you can see inflation has been rapidly increasing the past two and a half years, tapping out at nearly 10% just a few months ago. And now we look like we're leveling off a bit. We're seeing some positive news on inflation, down to 6.5%. The January numbers come out in about two weeks. We'll see if we continue that downward trend. So I pulled this slide from the presentation just to show you the differences between the budget that was enacted in June of 2022 and what the governor has proposed. And so just the takeaway from this slide is if you look at the blue bar graph or the blue bars, that's the enacted budget, and that's the assumption, or that's the forecast for personal income tax to the state. You can see in every case, starting with the current budget year, 22, 23, as well as the projected budget year, and then going into those out years, that the governor's proposal is assuming a pretty significant reduction in revenue coming into the state. Again, not assuming an actual recession, but certainly a slowdown in growth. We're not seeing the boom years that we saw from a government revenue standpoint that we had the past few years. And so this has, again, kind of the very high view. This is not education-specific. This is just to let you see the overall picture of the governor's proposal for California state funding. As I said, you can see, again, about $20 million reduction in expenditures, $20 billion reduction in expenditures. However, education's largely untouched with, when it comes to ongoing revenues. I've talked a bit about the risk to the budget. And so this one, do we have, actually, is there a pointer?
Laser pointer?
Laser pointer. Oh, there we go. I don't know if you can see it, but really, what I draw your attention to is just those final few bars. Again, this is looking at the Prop 98 guarantee. Again, I mentioned Prop 98 is that modification of the constitution that ensures a base level of funding for school districts across the state of California. We had unprecedented growth during those COVID years. There's a number of reasons why tax revenues actually significantly increased, even though most of us felt a pretty significant hit during that period. The education did receive very significant, again, boom years, significant growth in revenue. However, we see that actually declining for next year, overall funding to education, and really kind of tapering off. And so something for us to be mindful of as we plan for the future. So what's in the governor's proposal? The most important thing that you've already heard our partners with BTA mention is statutory COLA. They have increased the projected COLA at 8.13%. And so right now, they're anticipating being able to fund a COLA increase across the main funding source, which is LCFF, the base grant would receive that, as well as a number of categoricals. I'm going to jump ahead and I'll go back, but just so you can see the categoricals, special education, child nutrition, state preschool, that all of these other programs will also receive that COLA increase. A few other things that I'll mention as far as the overview for LCFF, the governor actually right now, in order to balance the budget, is using one-time dollars for an ongoing cost. It's something that we say we don't want to do. This is, again, an unusual practice that the governor is doing, but he's trying to find a way to avoid dipping into reserves just yet. But he's utilizing $1.4 billion in one-time funding to help cover the cost for the increase in LCFF based on this COLA. He also has come up with a really interesting idea. I'm not sure that's actually going to hold in the next few months, as there is this, again, political maneuvering back and forth between the legislature and the governor. But this equity multiplier, Burbank would not be a recipient or beneficiary, but it's targeted towards schools with the highest concentration of vulnerable and at-risk students. And so it's specifically schools that have a concentration of 90% students who qualify for free lunch, not just free and reduced meal, but actually the free. And so this is, again, the highest poverty areas, the highest concentration of poverty. There's roughly 600 schools that would qualify for this funding. Again, Burbank unified would not have a school that would qualify for this. This is, comes from a portion of what School Services calls their DART board. If you hear me mention the future DART board, this is what I'm referring to. This is after each one of the budget updates that we get from the state, they come out with a variety of, it's a single-page document that just helps us have kind of the whole picture of the funding projections that they're providing to all school districts in the state. And my colleagues across LA County and throughout the state will be using these, their DART board, these numbers as we budget for the coming year. So you can see, again, the base level of funding for this year for LCFF, our primary funding source, varies between $9,100 for TK, moving up to $11,000 for nine through 12. And you can see what the effect of that 8% COLA is, again, bringing funding overall closer to a $10,000 to $12,000 range per ADA at those various grade levels. This is the other part of that DART board. Again, I know a lot of data on here, just to let you see what we're using for our planning assumptions when we are building out a multi-year budget. We're looking at that 8.13 COLA right now for '23-24. But then the COLAs that we're looking at in those out years is assuming a pretty significant drop in inflation, and then the funded COLA going down to below 4%, again, 3.5% for '24-25, 3.3% for the following year. A few things that the legislature and the governor still are not really helping us with, or not finding a solution for, is what really is, in essence, an unfunded mandate from the state. We don't have the ability to sit down with our partners with CSEA and BTA to negotiate around the pension. That is, again, required at the state level. And so when they set these price points, we have, right now, 19.1% is the contribution. For every dollar that we give a teacher, an additional 19.1 cents are going into their pension. That is over a doubling from just the past, you know, seven or so years. And this number is going to continue to change if we see, again, a slowdown in the stock market, because the factors that play into the calculation here is a combination of the investment returns of the current pension assets, as well as the number of employees who are paying into this, which is California declines in enrollment. We anticipate a decline also in overall workforce population in the teacher workforce. And so we already know that there's at least going to be one, one thing against us when it comes to the contribution toward pension. That's the, an overall, again, declining enrollment across the state is going to be forcing fewer teachers across the state to be funding this pension program. But then if you also anticipate reduced market returns, and again, this is very likely to increase in the coming years. PERS, they've already told us that they know it's going to increase. And so with the latest budget proposal, we're seeing what's currently a 25% contribution from the employer. So again, this is in addition to what employees pay. Employees pay roughly 10% across bargaining units. On top of that, the school district contributes 25% of an employee's salary toward their pension contribution. We're anticipating that now going up to 28% in just two budget years. And again, that's, that's the exact same thing as giving 3% increase to those staff. It's from a, from a cost to the district perspective. It really is a significant unfunded mandate from the state. We know it's important for our staff, but we need to get some relief from the legislature in helping us address these, these continued pension increases.
I'm sure many elected Assemblymember Freedmen, Senator Portantino, anytime I can grab their ear, I hop on the soapbox because they're automatically putting money back into our budgets that are already there.
Right.
And it won't cost, you know, the state one penny for us to have that money back. I'm sure they're tired of hearing from me, but they're going to keep hearing because as, as Mark Norberg said today, spend today's money on today's kids. This is taking money away from today's kids that it belongs to and paying something that, as a district, we had no part of losing any of that money.
Right.
And I can't figure out the rationale why they think that today's kids should pay that back. It doesn't make any sense to me.
It's challenging. I mean, promises have been made to, again, the many people, men and women who sacrificed serving our kids in the past to be able to have this entitlement. But right, when the state hasn't supported us with it, it means that we are using current dollars to backfill promises made in the past.
And not an ask. It was just, this is what you're going to do.
Right.
And I just, it just, oh, gosh, it just...
We share the same sentiment.
Well, and just to piggyback on that a little bit, you know, I look back at a few slides ago when you presented kind of the year-over-year, and when Ms. Tabit joined the board, when I joined the board, when Dr. Hill began his tenure here, that climb was an absolute mountain. And our bargaining partners got through that. And our bargaining partners got through that with us and worked with us to get through that. So, you know, we have weathered some serious storms. The numbers are daunting still. It seems like, you know, but pension obligations are real. And we've got to make sure that we maintain our commitment, that if you work for a public institution, that, that we're going to make sure that your pension is paid. And so I don't agree, and I think in a million different ways, there should have been, at different point in time, different point in times, different paydowns, that I think could have been utilized, that would have relieved pressure off of districts. But I do want to take a moment to commemorate how far we've come in the, you know, seven to nine years-ish that we've been here. And now our new colleagues, welcome to the climb. So, you know, and again, to, to all of our employees, again, who, they too are paying more. Thank you. But to members of the public at home, that's what we've been managing. That's why you don't see innovation in the way that I think a lot of people want to see in our, in our district. So that's why you see clause and real efforts for additional revenues. So I just wanted to flag that and just kind of talk about where we've been, because we've done a lot.
Yeah, that's great, great. Thank you. So here's another place where we've come from. Again, when, when you're talking about seven years ago, you know, minimum wage in the state was $10 an hour. And so if we had a position that was paying $14 an hour, we were 40% over the minimum wage. You know, that was a competitive wage that we could find, you know, strong employees that were willing to, you know, were excited to accept something that was 40% above minimum wage. As minimum wage has increased so drastically, so quickly, again, a 55% increase in a matter of about six years, we've not been able to give 55% increases across the board to our workforce. And so therefore, that position that we used to be able to start someone off at 40% above minimum wage, now they're starting 15% off minimum wage. And by the way, Target and Chevron are starting, you know, the gas attendant and the cashier at $21 an hour. And so this is another one of those factors that are larger than anything within the school district, but have certainly applied additional pressure for us recruiting and retaining, you know, the talent that we, we know that this district deserves. So one thing I want to talk about, and again, President Ferguson, you, you mentioned part of this, you know, when we think about where we have come from, you know, that it's not as simple as saying, even I mentioned that term boom years. I'm sure a few of you may have even cringed at hearing boom year, because it didn't feel like a boom year for us. And there's a variety of reasons for that. One, when you have declining enrollment, and we're going to get to that slide in a few moments, the effect that declining enrollment has on overall revenue for a district. But there's also a number of increases that a district has to fund before we can actually look at things like increased staffing to reduce class sizes, or before we can look at, again, increasing compensation package for our staff, who are certainly so deserving. And then so a number of those are those pension increases that we just mentioned, special education costs, which every district in the state is, is dealing with the reality of increased cost to support our special education program. Inflation, we just heard earlier, the utility rates that have been going up. I mean, that's hitting our school district, you know, significantly. So there's a number of increases before we even can talk about any additional funding for a compensation enhancement or for other, again, budget priorities, to just make sure that we're maintaining the status quo of what we had a year prior. So a few things real quick on just, again, that arts, material instructional block grant. This is the one that I mentioned, that the governor's budget proposal is proposing that we, he would reduce this current bill, or the current law by a $1.2 billion allocation, clawing that back. You, this board, again, approved at the last board meeting, our spending plan for that. We acknowledge at the time that we may have to just anticipate not being able to use over the three-year span, instead focusing it more, more intentionally over that two. But this is one of those areas that we are going to be asking for community support and really making sure that we do let the legislature know just how important this is, that we can't, can't receive funding allocations. And again, having, making our decisions based on current legislation and then being told that that's going to be swept back and removed from, from local control. So we encourage those who are listening at home and for those here tonight, this is, this is a really, really critical change that the governor proposed, and we are hopeful that, that we will be able to maintain the assurance that we had back in June, that this funding will be there for us. We do have Prop 28, though. That was something that passed in November. These are very different funding sources. I know they both have those terms, arts and music in their title, but they, they really should not be confused for one another. This is a voter-passed proposition. Our funding would be less than what we're talking about being, losing as a result of the governor's proposed sweep. And this funding is very, again, intentionally targeted at the state level, so it's not, it doesn't, the district control over this is, is reduced, and it's actually the state principal that has, is responsible for developing the, the plan for use of these funds. They, one of the first programs that I'm aware of at the state level, where they have supplement, not supplant language, that's something, again, in education speak, we often talk about, that the federal funding will say that that funding has to go for additional programs, not things we already were doing. This is one of the first state initiatives I'm aware of that actually saying the same thing, so we couldn't use it to fund current music instruction. We couldn't use it for current art instruction. It actually has to be at the state level, an additional program over and above what was taking place in this current year, 22, 23. And there's actually, right now, uncertainty, a lot of dispute at the state level about whether or not any initiative that might be funded by the music and arts and instructional material block grant, whether that would be able to be backfilled by this funding source, or if that would be considered supplanting, and we actually could run into some challenges Learn Recovery Block Grant is the other large funding source that, again, one-time funding that we received. That just explains some of the areas, some of the funding, or some of the permissible expenditures. What's not in the proposed budget? Again, this is actually largely a status quo budget, where we've gotten used to, you know, in 2013, we introduced LCFF, again, one of Governor Brown's greatest accomplishments. And the idea was to try to have an equity-based funding model, again, give additional funding to the kiddos who are most in need, as well as return control to local level. And we were told categoricals were going away and revenue limit went away. And then we've, each year, started to see more categoricals, more programs where they say, we're not going to give it to a local control level. Instead, we're going to give funding for a very specific purpose. This year is one of the first times in recent memory of the governor's not proposing new special programs with set-aside funding, instead is really allowing that Prop 98 dollars, those education dollars coming to, to districts to be able to, to make their local decisions. What else is not in here? Again, we've talked about pension relief. The governor, right now, is not assuming that he has to draw down the reserve. And there's actually two separate primary reserves that would affect education. One is a Prop 98 reserve specifically for education. The other one's kind of that rainy day fund that we probably remember all, when it came into existence, again, about 10 years ago with Governor Brown. Both of those are remaining intact right now. And so those are both places where, if we do see that recession come in 2023, the governor has given himself some flexibility to maintain his budget priorities without having to, to cut expenditures. So this is a really key slide. And again, I want to draw attention here for just a moment. When we talk about an 8% COLA, this is a hypothetical district, again, done by School Services, but they, they remind us not to think that because LCFF is receiving an 8%, 8.1% proposed COLA, that that would be the funding that we actually see as an increase. This hypothetical district, they're just showing for, as an example, if you're in declining enrollment, if you were at 10,000 ADA, again, average daily attendance, average number of kids you have in school on any given day, if you lose, if you have a 2% drop in ADA, then you actually would end up only getting a 5.6% increased overall revenue increase to the budget year-over-year, even though the COLA is 8.13%. So even though you only lost 2% of your student population, you actually lost over, or nearly 3% of the actual COLA. Does that make sense? And that's why, when we talked about why the boom years didn't necessarily feel like boom years, certainly a part of that was the reality of declining enrollment, also the reality of a number of, of budget priorities that we identified, particularly related to COVID, that were not things that were able to have the, the flexibility in, in spending that perhaps we would have wished. So just to wrap up, again, a reminder, this is just the beginning of the budget cycle. We will bring our second interim revision to you for Burbank Unified on the March 2nd board meeting, so that will be the next look at our local budget. And again, all of us will have our eyes toward the, the governor and toward Sacramento in May, when they come out with their revision, and will be working toward our budget build process in May and June. And so I just will close with a reminder of our multi-year projection that you approved back in December. What we're looking at is a current year with expenditures approximately $220,000, but that goes down, again, pretty precipitously for next year and the year following, because so much of that funding is based on one-time dollars, either COVID or these new block grants. Okay? With that, are there any questions?
Looking to my colleagues to my left, to my right. This is great. Ms. Ponsor Campcliff.
Thank you, President Ferguson. I've got one that I'm still kind of noodling on, but I'll get there. So, hi, thank you. So I think the, the first is just a request, and maybe you're planning to do this anyway, but I, I found the, like, sample district slide to show what the difference in COLA will act, what our actual increase will be, to be tremendously helpful in explaining what that actually looks like differently. Now, I was going to try to look back at our December meeting to see what the enrollment projections were there, and I don't remember them, right? So I don't know the size of the enrollment deficit that we're looking at, especially considering all the uncertainty around how many kids are going to sign up for TK. I signed up. We'll see, fingers crossed, guys. I think the other piece, so I would request that when you kind of come back in March. I'm also curious, and you may not have an answer for this, but I noticed there were mentions of deferrals. And so if we think about how deferrals have happened in the past, are we at all concerned about like a days cash on hand kind of perspective? And are our two reserves calculated in days cash? Like, is that something that, like, if they defer for six months, are we in trouble from a cash perspective?
If they deferred for six months, that would not be good.
Okay.
That would not be good. So just a reminder, again, this is something that, again, I think that you on the board know, but for those watching at home, a lot of people think that education's primarily funded by property tax dollars. That's not the case in California. And so we do get a significant increase in cash when property taxes are due. And so we received that at the district level, December and May. And so that helps us significantly with cash flow, as we're waiting for some of those other state dollars to come in from the, again, the tax revenue and from those other sources, the income tax and the sales tax. But we don't have six, six months of cash on hand. That, that certainly would be a challenge. The deferrals, though, that they're talking about right now largely are outside of education. The ones that are for education, what it is, is that they're allocations that they are, again, delaying the, the release of those funds. So one example would be, they had set aside $650 million for a particular school construction match for facilities. They were not planning on actually giving those funds until next year, and now they're saying, we're actually going to wait at least one more year. And so, again, we aren't banking on those dollars. And so some of those types of deferrals are not going to hit us at the local level, but certainly it does affect the way the government is, is trying to get creative to, to prepare for a potential recession.
Dr. Weisberg. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, with that, so, you know, some Cliff Notes, you referenced it a little bit. I did walk out of the room to refill my single-use plastic. It is now two-use plastic, so there we go. Not getting any better, but trying, folks. So one, this situation may get better or worse in May.
That's right.
Okay. We've got to remember that. Our bargaining units know that, but I think we all need to help the public, as there's always a new class of parents getting to know things. Mr. Schlossman, earlier in his public comments, reference Ed 100. I was able to sit down with PTA Council President Lori Little to discuss potentially bringing that back as a recognition, trying to, again, elevate the level of learning. I know that's been a program that's been helpful in the past in helping us to get the message out, so, you know, this is a time for that, especially as we are looking at more challenging budgets. What I want to ask my board colleagues for is some leeway with the executive committee to begin working with staff to identify, one, potential one-time funding requests that our, members of our legislature could potentially ask as a part of their budget asks, that both Anthony Portantino, I'm sorry, excuse me, Senator Portantino, Senator Menjivar, and Assemblywoman Friedman all have different abilities to request certain budget asks. So I, I think it's important that we bring back and build consensus around what we could potentially request. And two, that we discuss, again, the impacts, we've already talked to staff about that, you know, about the impacts of, of dropping off a year of funding, et cetera. But really, you know, giving us, giving them a playbook of what's going to help them, you know, this district, because, you know, they're looking at the LAO, they're getting feedback from committee consultants, they're not necessarily hearing from us in, in language that's operational to them, and we need to give them the strategy guide. So I'd like us to be able to build a draft and bring that back to the board for a nod. And hopefully we can do that sooner rather than later. Capital projects, you know, again, SFOC, I think, may be a good place to field some of that, if the discussion's been there already. But again, $1 million or less in, in those requests, because I just don't think they're going to flow in the same way. So just asking for that leeway, and then we'll circle back. Dr. Agarkhania.
So again, just, I always bring this up, again, but for our viewers, for clarification, because we always have the same conversation during budget time. You know, and I think this is a conversation that, when we're talking to our electeds, we need to have, because what Burbank is, being a middle class, almost what I call a perfect middle class, we don't get our fair share when it comes to certain fundings.
Right.
But also, you know, I've said this before, I say it again, it's, you know, we want to solve all these issues, repeal Prop 13, you know? I mean, people always talk about this, you know? And, and it's Proposition 13. I mean, it's been an issue, it continues. We had a good year last year. I'm not surprised we're going into deficit, 20 billion and counting. But I think this is another conversation, and we need to also talk to our city people. If they're bringing forward new projects, if we're looking at legislation, you know, what kind of a taxing is there? What is it we're getting, but also is it a fair share when it comes to cities like ours? It is very different. There are cities who can balance their budget based on their own district foundations, because they have a very high income, you know, they don't get much of a property tax money, because, but there are also cities who serve very under, you know? So there has to be a balance. I feel like we're, I, I agree with you, we need to bring, bring forward. But we did bring some of these issues forward last year, when we had 50 billion-plus surplus. But the conversation was, well, yeah, this doesn't fall into that category, this category. And I think I do agree with you, and some of us have worked on the budget, some of us, you know, have a bit of an experience when it comes to budgeting. But I think it is time for us to really ask, you know, what it is we need, but also to make sure people understand that Burbank is a little different.
That's right.
When it comes to, you know, our funding.
And what I'm hoping, Dr. Agarkhania, and I'm going to go to Dr. Weisberg next, because she has a question, is that, one, we can kind of build a bit of a roadmap, and then, again, deploy that to all of us in our varied, you know, roles. So Ms. Tabit has longstanding relationships on Five Star. Maybe there's rooms that we can build consensus with our Five Star colleagues on, and then, again, have a broader coalition that we can embrace from that end. You know, we all have varying levels of relationship with assembly members. You know the Speaker, you know, at least for the next few months, right? These are all people that we can call, all people that we can engage on behalf of our young people. All of us want to be a part of the solution. But the difference is, is sometimes we just rely on one of us to do this. All of us should do this. All of us should mobilize. And that way, our talking points are the same wherever we go, staff is on the same page with us, and we're working as one team on behalf of 15,000 learners. Cool? Dr. Weisberg.
I know that Senator Portantino is bringing back the bill that focuses on ADA, has shifted from attendance to enrollment, so it'd be good also to, I mean, this is just a quick addendum, but like, that's not something we have to ask for, he's already doing it. I don't know where it is.
So the quick synopsis, synopsis is, is that he was planning on introducing it shortly, so it doesn't have a bill number yet.
Spoiler.
Does he now? I'm sorry, did I get that wrong, or was that another bill?
There's two, the one, but he, I believe it's Prop 98, AB 98.
AB 98, that is right.
SB 98, SB 98.
Was the mental health the third one? That we, he was waiting on a bill, not, okay. So SB 98. So again, that's an expensive bill, though. So we've got to... So we've got to acknowledge it's an expensive bill that, that in this budget climate may not see the light of day. So we can support it, we can build for it, but in the meantime, what's the contingency plan? So I think we'll, we'll plan for that, and we'll bring resolution briefly.
Yeah, are we also getting any money for, I know there's some federal funding coming for recruiting new teachers. I heard that there is funding that's being offered. $20,000, I heard, or $40,000 if you come in and...
There was a board certification grant of some sort that was discussed very briefly, but we can look into that and circle back.
Wasn't there also?
Ms. Tabit, sorry.
Wasn't there also something for non, for employees who are not teachers to go through a teacher credentialing program? There is, there is some bill or a money, some money somewhere.
Let's circle back with more information on that, so we know.
Part of what you asked before, I think, for what Senator Portantino brought to us, so that we could do resolutions, I, it's, it's got to be in there.
So I'll ask that staff check in with Ms. Tabit on that and track on the resolutions, just so we can get them here, and then we'll get, we'll focus on the agenda items itself.
Yeah.
Okey-dokey. The other thing I'll ask that during this conversation, as we're bringing it, the impacts of natural gas costs on the district, if we can get a, I know we're not out of it yet, but if we can start getting a real dollar figure now for that, at a minimum, the state should offset that, at a minimum. So as a part of our request, so I'd like to be able to make that dollar amount real for folks, both in the public and also for our, our members of the legislature, who I think are already aligned on trying to rid ourselves of, of natural gas and dependence on fossil fuels generally. But again, it helps to have those dollar totals. So if we could start figuring that out as a part of this kind of letter and kind of working plan, that would be ideal.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Any other questions from my colleagues?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for this report. Comprehensive, as always, we'll continue to hear. It's the gift that keeps on giving, the California State Budget. With that, we'll move to item 12, new and/or unfinished business. Our first item is item 12A, adoption of Resolution 15 proclaiming the week of February 6, 2023 through February 10, 2023 as School Counseling Week. I have a motion.
President Ferguson.
Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we adopt the Resolution 15 proclaiming the week of February 6, 2023 through February 10, 2023 as School Counseling Week.
Second.
Move by Dr. Weisberg, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian to adopt Resolution 15. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Dr. Weisberg, would you read the resolution, please?
Resolution 15 proclaiming the week of February 6, 2023 through February 10, 2023 as School Counseling Week. Whereas school counselors are employed by the Burbank Unified School District to help students reach their full potential as part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. And whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to self-awareness and personal development. And whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas staff, students, and parents are encouraged to recognize the efforts of the school counselor. And whereas the Board of Education of the Burbank Unified School District expresses strong support and deep gratitude to the past and present counselors for their commitment and dedication to the students and staff of the Burbank Unified School District, now therefore be it resolved, that the week of February 6, 2023 through February 10, 2023 be recognized as School Counseling Week in the Burbank Unified School District.
Thank you, Dr. Weisberg, and thank you to all of our school counselors who are juggling more than ever in this world and taking on more than ever. So again, thank you for your service to our district, and we celebrate your service and everything you do to make learning amazing in this district. With that, we'll move to item 12B, ratification of a lease agreement with Cannon Solutions America, Inc. Can I get a motion, please?
President Ferguson.
Dr. Weisberg.
You want to do it?
Sure.
Ms. Tabit.
Or you, no, I'm just teasing you, sorry, just kidding.
Love you, just trying to get you home.
Yes, and I am tired tonight. I move that the Board of Education ratify the lease agreement between Burbank Unified School District and Cannon Solutions America, Inc., Piggyback Contract Number 202-000-2755 to acquire print shop equipment together with training, support, maintenance, and supplies on a five-year lease term effective January 20, 2023 through January 20, 2028, not to exclude, exceed $500,000 excluding taxes for 60 months plus the additional cost of clicks per month at .0025. On average, this will cost the district about $2,500 a month for clicks. And that the authority to sign the agreement be exercised pursuant to be USD, AR 3314 as presented.
Sir, second.
Second.
Okay, move by Ms. Tabit, thank you all for sharing, seconded by Dr. Weisberg. This is, this is something that during Agenda Review, Dr. Hill was very earnest about getting solved as a problem, so want to give an opportunity for him not to try and catch you flat-footed to, to be able to share. That was probably a bad phrase, that's a bad phrase. But nevertheless, I didn't want to surprise you, so apologies for that. Again, ability, learning, so apologies for that, better comparison. So if you could, if you could explain what this update is to our printers and et cetera, that would be helpful for members of the public, just want to celebrate, I think, a victory.
Yeah. First, I want to thank Ms. Lamb from our Print Center and Mr. Cantwell. They have been working very closely with our existing vendor. We've been having very challenges with our printers. It hasn't lived up to the contract and our services, so we were able to get out of that contract, and then they explored other vendors, and we're able to negotiate this deal with Cannon so that we can move forward.
So the backlog here, thank you for addressing this. This was a systemic issue. This is not government gone crazy that isn't accountable, that isn't reviewing things. We are, very actively. And so again, want to celebrate those moments when we have them. Dr. Aga Khanian.
Thank you. As a former employee of HB, I have a question. No, I'm just...
Of conflict.
Thank you, that was years ago. A quick question, when it comes to support, is it technical support, or are they going to charge us extra for every call that we make when it comes to technical support? No technical support, right?
No, so the, the per-click cost of a quarter cent per every page that we print, that includes the full maintenance cost of servicing the equipment in addition to the actual ink and everything else for the equipment, so.
But if someone has an issue... Can you, Mike? Thank you.
If there is an issue, and they call tech support, are they going to charge us extra?
No, so that's included in that maintenance cost.
In the maintenance.
That's correct. The, the maintenance cost is part of the per-click rate, so that's how they, they charge maintenance.
Ms. Tabit.
I'm very happy to hear this, because I know we've been having some issues, and this is a great support for our teachers and staff to be able to have onsite, sort of, printing services. I mean, the cost is much better. There, there's a lot of choices for folks to make, and I know that they work really hard over there, so I'm very glad that we are able to support them with new equipment.
Thank you. With that, we have, any other comments with that? We have a motion by Ms. Tabit, seconded by Dr. Weisberg. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you for getting that done. We will move to item number 12C, approval of the agreement for special services with Perkins Eastman DPC.
President Ferguson.
Ms. Tabit.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Perkins Eastman DPC for the facility's master plan effective February 3, 2023, not to exceed $523,600, and that authority to sign the agreement be exercised pursuant to be USD, AR 3314 as presented.
Second.
Move by Ms. Tabit, seconded by Ms. Ponsor-Campcar to approve the agreement. Briefly, in Agenda Review, we asked that the terms of this agreement, again, being transparent with Agenda Review, that's important and something I promised to this board, so that we include an exploration of potentially bringing housing development onto some of our school sites for employees. The cost of living continues to soar, and so the feasibility of housing, doing our best to, to study this in a way that would mitigate impacts on neighborhoods, so we are not bad neighbors, but being a very, again, diligent community partner, but also employer that could potentially answer some of the needs of our employees for the long term. We have to think in the long term, even though we have bare-bones budgets. I want to thank the superintendent and staff for being receptive to that feedback, and I think that the feasibility of that could potentially really serve us well and the students well of this district. So that, with that, it'll get kicked to the school facilities process and all of you, but that was something we attempted to, to augment in the course of our conversations.
This company dude had a great perspective and, and position on feasibility, where they talk about how we can save money by reducing our, our ways that we could do better, reducing our usage and other things. So it was kind of exciting.
Absolutely.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, and, and thank you to Dr. Weisberg as well. I know this has been a conversation, so making it a reality is, is kind of exciting. I never thought that a school district would have to be a housing provider, yet here we are, potentially exploring this as a real option. So thank you again. We do have a motion and a second. Ms. Quiterio, do you have the motion and the second? Are you good to go? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Move on to item 12D, approval of addendum to agreement with the Family Service Agency of Burbank to provide school-based counseling services.
President Ferguson.
Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we approve the addendum to agreement with Family Service Agency of Burbank to provide school-based counseling services as presented.
Second.
Move by Dr. Weisberg, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian. Any further discussion on this item? Thank you to the Family Service Agency of Burbank for your continued partnership. This is a, a small amount that we give, you know, it's small, yet significant from our budget, the city as well. Want to thank you for over 20 years of partnership to bring about these programs to our schools and to the Family Service Agency of Burbank, who fundraises to augment and support this program. Our kids are, we are saving lives with this program in partnership, and to anybody who questions the city and the district's ability to get along, this is living proof of what happens in, in meaningful ways when, when we do this work. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. We'll move on to item 12E, amendment of teacher assignments for the 2022-2023 year.
President Ferguson.
Dr. Weisberg.
I move, wait, what am I reading? I just lost my complete...
Recommend?
I recommend that the, wow, I'm like, I recommend that the Board of Education amend the teacher assignments for 2022-2023 as described per education codes 44258.2, 44258.3A and B, C and D, 44263 and 44865 as presented.
Move by Dr. Weisberg, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian to approve item 12E. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Onto item 12F, approval of job description for school psychologist intern placement on the certified, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, certificated personnel special assignment salary schedule. Can I get a motion?
President, you, milady.
I move that the Board of Education, job description for school psychologist intern and placement on the certificated personnel special assignment salary schedule as presented. Did I read that right? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Sound great?
Move by Ms. Tabit, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian to approve item 12F. Any further discussion on this item?
Sir.
This will be some meaningful support, so good luck. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five zero. Onto item 12G.
President Ferguson.
Point of privilege, Ms. Tabit. I get you next meeting.
Okay.
That was cool, it's hers. I understand, it's Richard Dees.
You know, it goes a long way back, so, and it's funny...
Since the magic was written.
Yes, by, by Mr. Kemp and Mr. Bunch, who, I happened to see Mrs. Bunch the other night, so Mr. Bunch is doing well, in case anyone was wondering where this came from. So I move that the Board of Education take formal action accepting the following gifts to the district, and that the Board President, Mr. Ferguson, convey appreciation with exuberance to the donors as presented.
Second.
With exuberance, we have a second.
Move, move by Ms. Tabit, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian to, let me do this with exuberance. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She gets it. That motion carries five zero. With that, I am proud to convey our thanks and appreciation to the donors for the following gifts to the district. The Board of Education and the Burbank Unified School District wish to thank the following: The Kroger Company, who has donated $236.52 to be used as needed at Dolores Wortham Middle School. The Kroger Company, who has donated $46.59 to be used as needed at Dolores Wortham Middle School. The Blackbong Giving Fund, who has donated $384.62 to be used as needed at Dolores Wortham Middle School. Half the Sky Entertainment, Inc., who has donated $5,000 to be used as needed at McKinley Elementary School. McKinley PTA, who has donated $10,500 to be used for field trip buses at McKinley Elementary School. Families for Stevenson, who has donated $29,979.99 to be used for Apex Fund Run at Stevenson Elementary School. Bret Hart Elementary School FRC, I believe that's fundraising committee, which has donated $5,150 to be used for a music consultant at Bret Hart Elementary School. Just confirming, that's a fundraising committee, great. Charity Aid Foundation America, which wishes to donate $50 to be used as needed at Walt Disney Elementary. The Blackbong Giving Fund, again, who wishes to donate $400 to be used at Walt Disney Elementary. Rebecca McHugh, who wishes to donate $300 to be used as needed at Walt Disney Elementary School. The Walt Disney Elementary PTA, which donate, which wishes to donate $1,360.91 to be used for a steam table at Walt Disney Elementary School. The California Community Foundation, which has donated to the district $1,000 to be used for the library at Walt Disney Elementary School. Leo Goldberg, who wishes to donate $250 to be used for materials, technology, and the arts district-wide. We thank all of our donors, big and small. I do want to take a, a moment of privilege to also say I attended the Music as Instrumental Concert Benefit. If that's not a gift that keeps on giving, once again, thank you to the Williams family for allowing us and allowing our young people to play such phenomenal pieces. There were so many very cool moments. Everybody, you know, you're like, this is, you know, this is, these are high school students, holy moly. There's so much talent. To all the instructors, support teams, parents who helped put on the event, thank you. We know you already have a busy concert schedule, so to help us attack our instrument repair budget and performing arts needs in this district, huge. Thank you to Peggy Flynn. Again, all the parent volunteers who made that happen, it was a magical night. Also seeing some alumni return to play for the VIP reception out in the quad, beautiful. And I also have to say, the campus has never looked cleaner. So to everybody who made that possible, looks great. Really, I walked around and was a very proud, kind of starstruck alumni. So it was great. Dr. Aga Khanian has a comment.
Thank you, Mr. President Ferguson. I know we've talked about this, but I want to bring it back again. I think maybe since we're talking about, you know, collaboration, making sure we're on the same page when we're doing some of these projects, I'm bringing this back again. I hope we can do it this year. I hope to, as we've spoken about this, maybe dedicate a day to all of our donors, maybe invite them for a luncheon or a breakfast, just to thank them, you know? And I think that will also encourage the spirit of giving, and maybe some of these donors will come back with even bigger donations. We can pick a, you know, and, you know, one of our campuses and, you know, provide you a lunch or breakfast, just an appreciation day of our donors. If that's something we can look into, I would really appreciate it.
Absolutely. I definitely think it is something we can look into.